Yep, Bastian.
President.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Houseman.
Parsons.
President.
Wakefield. Mayor Lumberg.
Yes, item 9C, 11B, and 12C, we're still working on contract language for those three.
11B and what, 12C?
Yes.
So 9C, 11B, 12C. I'll make a motion to approve of those revisions.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curried. Okay, we need to approve the minutes next of September 27th and October 1st.
Moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, the approval of the bills and claims.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Curried? Okay, anybody wish to speak to the council or five-minute time, sir?
Fireworks now or under that agenda item?
What are you here for? Which agenda item?
Fireworks.
Fireworks? Let's just wait till that. Well? Let me think here, where is it?
Under, uh, Mr. Erby.
Sir, I'm gonna have you come up right now and speak to it.
Little bit taller than this gentleman. My name is Jim Erby. Live at 905 East Maywood Street. And first of all, I'd like to thank you ladies and gentlemen for keeping fireworks on the agenda. As you know, I've been here several times to express my opposition to the fireworks legislation as it exists now. And have talked about the impact of fireworks on myself personally, on people in the community. And I don't wanna rehash those because I've done that before, but for the sake of our new mayor, I did wanna summarize a little bit of what I believe is taking place to this point. Historically, fireworks have been legal in Brandon two days a year, on the 3rd and 4th of July. Pet owners, veterans suffering from PTSD. I think people have complained to the council with migraines and other noise-related problems. This year, I had to contend with the impact of fireworks for nine days. They started on the 30th of June, and they continued somewhat unabated, but definitely unabated, for nine consecutive days. One lady attended one of the meetings that we had here with a five-gallon bucket, half-full of spent fireworks that she collected out of her gutters, off of her roof and off of her property. And she also talked about the fact that expensive glassware that she had on shelves in her house actually vibrated off the shelf onto the floor because of the concussion from the fireworks. And I know people who shoot fireworks get a couple of minutes of pleasure out of it, no question about that. But what I'd like to be able to impress on the council is the fact that the rest of us, other than those few people, suffer from the consequences of that, at least for those nine days. In my case, with pets, until late October, I was still trying to get the noise-sensitive, scared pets that I have back to normal after what they experienced. Complaints this year to the police rose from four in 2017 to 39 in 2018. It's an 850% increase from one year to the next. And if you do the math based on, I think, about 3,500 households in Brandon, that's one in every 88 households that actually complained to the police. That does not include complaints that possibly came to you, ladies and gentlemen. Because of the nature of the problem, the police typically arrive after the fact. Yet, the way the legislation is written, if Chief Cull and his folks don't actually observe the infraction, it's very difficult for them to write a citation. And even if it's on the 3rd and the 4th, legal days, they're charged with the problem of figuring out, is this a legal firework or is it not a legal firework? That's a kind of an impossible task. I don't have any access to statistics about fire damage, about injuries, but I know there was some of each. So I think, in my opinion, and I'd like to propose to you gentlemen and ladies, that the time has come to face the fact that we're not a small rural community anymore. We're a population-dense community that simply can't continue to do things in a lot of areas, but certainly in this one, the way we've done them in the past. I think the time has come that we've gotta face that fact. I know fireworks were originally intended as a way to symbolize our patriotism, and I don't deny that at all. But I do know that some of the most patriotic people in the country, veterans who have suffered psychological damage from fireworks, are saying, please give us some relief from this. I think the rest of us are asking the council for some relief from that. I tried to do some research before I came tonight, and I was gonna look up U.S. cities that banned fireworks. And it was absolutely impossible to determine that because the list is absolutely so huge. But what I did find out, according to the American Pyrotechnics Association, they have a 2018 state directory. Twenty-two states and the District of Columbia either banned fireworks totally in the entire state, or they limit them to sparklers and non-explosive novelties that don't go up in the air and don't make noise. That's essentially the same thing as the Sioux Falls ordinance. Paraphrasing Chief Cull, when we talked about this before, if I may, Chief, wherever he is, we can pass any ordinance we want, saying anything we want is illegal. But unless the public is aware that it is illegal, and unless the police department can enforce it firmly, there's no point in even having the ordinance. So what I'm proposing tonight is that we adopt an ordinance that mirrors Sioux Falls that very simply stated says, if it makes noise or goes up in the air, it's illegal 365 days out of the year. Period, end of statement. So that leaves novelty items, that leaves sparklers, it leaves a lot of things, but the fact that someone has chosen to exercise their right to fire those off does not cause the rest of us to suffer for months and months and months. I've put together, and Dana has a copy, in my five minutes, I don't wanna try to go across, cover 11 points of public awareness and enforcement. But I have submitted a plan to you guys that costs virtually nothing, and I'd be more than happy to discuss it when we get to that section of the agenda, if that would be appropriate, to make the public aware that there is a new ordinance, and for us then to enforce that ordinance. So if it's appropriate to make any other comments, when it comes up at the agenda point, you wanna hear anything else from me, I will. If not, I'll sit and be quiet and listen. Thanks very much.
TJ Cameron, 2417 East Lopez Lane, Brandon. I also volunteered on the fireworks committee, so I think that Dana has my official thoughts, but I wanna share some here. Being the owner of Brandon fireworks here, just on the outskirts across from the golf course, I have been a advocate of certain limitations because I do worry about the safety risk of fireworks. I would have a slightly modified, because originally, I have stood here and said, I think that any aerial fireworks shouldn't potentially be limited, but I've talked to many, many residents. And the more residents I've talked to, they've actually convinced me, because when we passed the ordinance to allow all this, everything, of course, it was okay for business. But I couldn't have it on my conscience that there's a safety risk, or somebody gets hurt, or a house gets on fire, or something like that. So I have been an advocate of putting in some additional limitations. I would suggest that we limit artillery shells and rockets. They're two very easily identified items that can cause a safety risk, both serve the risk of tipping over and shooting into garages or neighbors' properties or something like that. I do think the residents, though, if we do the proper enforcement, have appreciated being able to have a little bit of fun and celebrate the 4th of July. Now, I think we need to do that with limitations, and to Mr. Erby's point, it's only as good as we enforce it. So should we stick with our current ordinance, we need to enforce it and educate the public in a strong manner. And if we modify it slightly to limit it to maybe just the 4th of July or something like that, I definitely think that we should still potentially limit the artillery shells and rockets, very identifiable. One's a single tube that sits on the ground, it's the thing that shoots the huge ones into the air with a single display. Oftentimes, the consumer puts two or three of these tubes next to each other, and just the velocity of it coming out of the tube will knock the next two tubes over and create a risk. Rockets, same thing. They're on a very long stick, they go into something that, when it shoots off, it tips over. They're very identifiable, I think that law enforcement could easily identify it. I, as a retailer, would be more than happy to pass out any kind of flyers, as I have always done, even when we limited it completely a few years ago, when we opened it up a couple of years ago. I'd be more than happy to help educate the public any way I could. I intend to do a public display next year, and I think it'd be a great opportunity to educate the public, because it was very impromptu, we just did it around the, you know, planned it around the 29th or 30th of June, and had well over 1,000 people, and hopefully I can partner again with the golf course and the city, and I'd be a great partner for the city on it. And I'd be more than happy to pass out something that educates the public on whatever restrictions that we may have. But I would suggest that we perhaps allow a certain amount of fireworks, but we limit the time. So the 27th of June until the Sunday after the 4th is the state law. I know we, a few years ago, legalized the July 3rd from 7 to 11, and July 4th. You know, I think reasonable restriction, but most importantly, public education. Whatever we put in for the dates and times needs to be public education and enforcement, because that's the most important part of it. And again, when it comes up on the agenda, anything related to technicalities of fireworks, or I'd be more than happy to offer my opinion, should you call on me to do so as a, you know, expert, I would call myself in fireworks. Yes, sir?
In regards to the bottle rocket, consider the rocket?
I would consider anything with a stick a rocket. And including bottle rockets that may have the short rockets, but for simplicity and the fact of tipping over, because even a bottle rocket in a small thing has the same risk, rockets are rockets.
What about a Roman candle? Is that an artillery shell or no?
It's not. Artillery shells are the single load, yep, one after another. The nice, the thing about Roman candles is I know there's the, you know, unsafe use that some people use Roman candles for and such, but it, they are a firework that only shoots about 20 feet or so. So the thing with the artillery shells is they're capable of shooting 150 feet in the air, and they're a huge break. One of those goes off in somebody's garage or their lap or something, and it's a serious concern. You're welcome. Any other questions, or if they come up later, though, feel free to call on me, I'll be here until after that agenda item, at least. Thank you.
Crystal Berkman, 102 North Chestnut. Down to respond in regards to the Berkman letter. And as I heard from the last council meeting, as I listened to it, that there is people on this committee or on this council that feels that we're just down here making accusations in regards to what's going on on the east side of Brandon, especially in regards to our easement. So I'm down here for any questions or any comments. I got a whole file full of paperwork. You know, I've got a purchase agreement from TB&J from 2006 stating that they were supposed to give us a street access into that property that got landlocked. Okay? I got a map from Lisa Marshall stating that we should have access into our property from the south. But as you can see from this map, all four corners match. So I don't know if when I need to get stuff into that property that was landlocked, if we're just supposed to throw it over the fence. Here is another copy of a map, when the easement was supposed to go into our property, which is when they were down here talking about Sunflower Circle. And I don't know why our easement did not go in at that point, because that's when it was supposed to go in. When it didn't go in there, here's the map that shows what the city did on Sunflower, yet another cul-de-sac. Okay? A letter from Stockwell Engineers dated June 2nd of 2015 stating that when they did research, when we came down and started making a big fuss about it, when our easement didn't go in on Sunflower, this letter states that the researcher easement found that had not been vacated. In this letter, it said that they would then put it in when Augusta went in. Augusta went in, yet another cul-de-sac, landlocking our property. Okay? Last year, we sell this property. We started trying to sell this property on January 11th of 2017. Okay? When we tried to sell this property, it took almost a year to get to the closing table. Why did it almost get to, take a year? Because the property was landlocked, and we had to come up with a solution to get into the property. So, then there was another comment also made here recently about the park that we donated to the city of Brandon. Okay? Something that appeared in the Brandon Challenger stating that when we donated that park, we put stipulations onto it, and that it was supposed to be developed as a park. Okay? Brian Reed made a comment that when we gave the land to the city, that we indicated that we did not ever want that land developed, which is not true. Okay? October 6th, 2014. A letter from Bethany Meadows. Okay? We sit on the association board at Bethany Meadows. After several times of the residents at Bethany Meadows wanting to know when this park was ever gonna be developed, they came with their, up with their own committee over at Bethany Meadows to try to come up with something. They sent a letter to the city in 2014 stating that they would even apply for grant money to help pay for the development of that park. Now we're into 2018, and the park still has not been developed.
We never get any answers when we come down here. We always get pushed out the door.
I'm sorry. Can you step up to the mic? I can't hear you.
I said every time we come down here, we never get any answers, we always just get pushed out the door. Guess I'm curious to why it is all the time.
We were, John here, I wasn't down here, but John was down here to the meeting on September 17th, I believe, to address some of these issues, because we're well aware that now TB&J wants a sewer trunk line put in over there. I think first, before that sewer trunk line goes in, I think some of the issues that we have in these files need to be taken care of. There's an access easement on that property over there that still needs to go in.
Okay.
You know, at one time in this last file here, at one time, I have a letter here from Lisa Marshall's office from 2015 stating that the city would give us back that park property, and it states that they would give us back as a settlement negotiation. You know what? We don't want the property back. We want our access easement into that property, so that that property can be developed.
Okay, it sounds like that you have a longstanding situation here, and I'm kinda coming in on the middle of something here, but it's not gonna get solved at a public city council meeting, I don't think that. So I'm gonna try to instruct the administration to handle this, or respond to their needs or their requests, and we'll go from there.
Well, one of the reasons you came down-
Yeah, because we've been, we've been at this, as Lisa Marshall stated at your last meeting, we've been at this for the last five to seven years. I think that's ridiculous, that something like this should take that long, and that the city of Brandon should allow that property to be landlocked back there. And then forcing us to have to sell it for a loss, a big loss, because we had no access into this property that sat north of the park property.
Okay, it's gonna have to be handled by the administration, ma'am.
Okay. So you're gonna follow up on that?
We will follow up on it.
Because we're to the point where this needs to be settled.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that, you know, giving us, um, the park property back, which the access pointing to that one is nothing but a trail. You know, there's a letter in here, Lisa Marshall made a comment at the last meeting, or back in September, about saying that the city would allow us access into our landlocked property through the city property. I got a letter, because she said she was not aware that we said we could not get through that way, and I got a letter in this file stating that she was sent a letter stating that that, that we could not get through on that city trail.
As I said, I know, I can tell your frustration, but it is not gonna get settled at a public city council meeting. This is not the venue to settle a situation like you have right there. So I'm gonna instruct the administration to look into it, get back to you, and try to figure something out from there.
All right. Because we're not, because we felt since Barfish wanted to go on the record last, at the last meeting stating that we're just down here making accusations, that maybe we need to start going through and making this everything on record, on public, and no more closed-door meetings, because all our closed-door meetings are getting us nowhere.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, thanks.
Riley. You're up next.
My name is Riley McEwen. I'm 11 years old, and I'm here with my mom, Jen, and my dad, Chris. I've lived in Brandon all my life. We are here tonight to ask for changes that could make crosswalks in Brandon safer. Thank you for listening to us. Last week, I was hit by a truck while riding my bicycle to daycare from an after-school activity. We've handed out a map that shows what happened. I was crossing to the south side of Holly at 6th Street, right in front of middle school. I pressed the pedestrian signal, waited for the light to turn green, then started to cross at the crosswalk. The truck began to turn across the crosswalk to go west on Holly. It hit my helmet and knocked, and knocked me onto the ground, where I hit the other side of my helmet on the pavement. He did stop and get out to see if I was okay. I'm not supposed to talk to strangers, so I waved him off and got back on my bike and kept riding. I'm not supposed to, I ended up with some bad bruises, I've been sore for a few days, but I'm pretty much okay. Things could've been a lot worse. We are here tonight because we think that there are things that we can do to keep this from happening again. I'm going to do my part. I put together a PowerPoint presentation, hopefully can talk to some kids my age and younger about how to be safe in crosswalks. My mom is helping me with an awareness campaign to try to get drivers to pay more attention to people at crosswalks. We started a Facebook page and asked the media for help. We need your help for the rest. Our first request, more monitoring at the crosswalks. Mayor Lumberg has already talked with, with schools about increasing staff at crosswalks during school hours. Chief Cull has had his officers patrolling around crosswalks more. It would help if these patrols continued until 5:30 in the afternoon, because a lot of Brandon kids like me ride or walk around between 3:00 PM and 5:30 PM, when our parents get home from work. Our second and third requests are the result of talking with Chief Cull about what he thought could make crosswalks safer in Brandon. He suggested that Brandon change the gels in the crosswalk lights from yellow to red. This would include the crosswalk at the intersection of 4th and Holly and the crosswalk at the intersection of Asmae Sue, which are shown in red on the second map we've handed out. We'd like to request this change be made. Our third request is a change in traffic signals. Right now, when you hit the crosswalk signal, you get the cross signal, but at the same time, the cars get the intersection, the cars at the intersection get the green light. That means that they think that they're free to turn through the intersection if they don't see any pedestrians. As you might have heard, sometimes drivers don't see kids like me. We'd like to request a few seconds of delay after the pedestrians get the cross signal before the cars get the green light. We'd also like to make these signals no turn on red. This would keep the drivers like the one who hit me from turning across the crosswalk while someone's trying to cross the street. To summarize, we are, we request more monitoring at the crosswalks, changing the gel colors in the lights, building a delay in traffic lights for pedestrians, and making these lights no turn on red. We believe these little changes could go a long way in making crosswalks safer in Brandon. Thank you for considering them. Part of the reason we live in Brandon is so kids like me can ride our bikes and go for walks and not have to be afraid that we'll get hurt. Please help us keep Brandon a great place for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley, so much for coming up, and I'm so sorry that happened to you. But what a brave young man you are, and I appreciate that. So when we come up to this on the agenda, since you were in the visitors and timeframes, we'll address this when we get it to the agenda, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, anybody else that wishes to speak to the council? The timed section? Thanks, Riley. Did a nice job.
Welcome.
What? Oh, you're B, Modern Movement. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, come on up.
You're up next.
You're up next.
Good evening. My name is John Morosky and I'm a representative of Modern Woodman of America Fraternal Financial. Modern Woodman of America is a 135-year-old company that has provided insurance products, investments and banking products to its members in all small towns across the nation. Every year, Modern Woodman chapters give back to the communities in different ways and the things that we are involved with have helped small communities especially grow and prosper. One of the things that our chapters across the nation, every year are tasked with is going ahead and recognizing certain persons or groups that really make a difference in the community. Along with my board of the Brandon Chapter 7299, this year we discussed many different prospects early on in the year. One of the main prospects that came up from the very beginning, of course, was our Brandon Police Department. And not too long after we sat down and talked about this the first time, one of, one of our members brought up the fact, he said, hey, did you see that Brandon is one of the safest towns in the nation? And I said, nah, hey, I hadn't. So he brought his computer up and sure enough, there it was. And out of 10 cities that were listed as being safe in South Dakota, Brandon was number one. I personally feel is a direct result of Chief Cull and the fine officers that we have here in the Brandon area. And because of that, I was a great proponent in the beginning and that just, it was washed for me after that, that we needed to go ahead and recognize Chief Cull and the Brandon Police Department for the great job that they do. Modern Woodman has a program and it's called Hometown Heroes. You may have heard of it, maybe not, but what it basically is, is that the, the police department not only, you know, is working for the city, they do a lot of things, they volunteer a lot of different things and it's all appreciated. And this states that Modern Woodman of America recognizes the Brandon Police Department. You believe in volunteer service and so do we as a fraternal financial services organization dedicated to improving the quality of life for families and communities. We recognize your accomplishments and appreciate your contribution to your community. You are truly a hometown hero. Signed by Ken Massey, who's the president of Modern Woodman. I think it's a pretty great thing. The police department, I've been here for 30-some years and they've helped me out at times and they do a great job and it makes me very happy to be able to do this.
As I'll say, I, I'm pretty proud of the police department that we have right now. I think we've got a very, very good staff. One of the things that, I've said it before, one of the things that makes Brandon the community that it is and a safe community is, is also the people that live here and without that, we probably may not get that award. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. John, thank you for that award. Very well deserved.
Very nice.
Very nice of you and your company to present that. Okay, next, Brian, golf course.
We, you've got the 2018 rate comparisons with those courses that we feel are comparable to ours. Spring Creek, Willow Run, Baker, Elmwood, Prairie Green, and then a little bit of Great Life. We'll be looking at making some changes to those rates based upon some discussions we've had with council. One, make a small tweak in rates consistent with the CPI, which is 2.1 for all of the rates. Two, youth passes with the youth defined as to anyone 20 years of age and younger would be free golf. And then amending our current discount that's available until January 1st to just a flat 15% for everybody. So unless you've got some other changes, we'll draft up a resolution for the next council meeting for you to consider with those rates, rates reflected.
Anyone from the council, additional changes?
I think they're all good proposals to do. I guess it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, but I guess I'd encourage the management out there to maybe take it upon themselves to, if they need to tweak it during next year regarding the free passes, if they can just go ahead and do that.
Yeah, Zane and I have talked about that. You know, if we, if we have some issues or something, we can certainly change that anytime during the summer if we need to.
Our intention in giving the free passes to the youth are to try to encourage more youth golfers and try to work on that segment of the community.
Correct.
Very good idea. I'm glad Zane brought that forward as a possibility to have the youth golf for nothing in that, that respect. I think it's a good idea and you can bring it back next time and we'll officially approve it at that time. Is that correct? Next item on the agenda is a police committee report. Guess we have that in our agenda. Anything else, Dave?
Selecting.
You'll go to the officer promotion?
Huh?
The promotion?
Yeah.
Do you handle that?
Wade does.
Wade does.
Wade's the man.
I get to.
Yay, Wade.
One of the fun things.
Yeah. Good part of the job. So we're, we're looking to promote one of our officers to a sergeant. We opened the position about five weeks ago to everybody. We had four people that applied for it through an interview panel of Brian Reed and Julie Nelson and Dana Clark and Sergeant Steffler and myself. We have reached a conclusion to promote Austin Peterson to a sergeant position within the police department.
Very good.
I was just going to add that it was a privilege to sit in on the interviews. We had four amazing candidates. The whole force is amazing, but to, to sit in and get to know those four candidates a little bit better was, was truly a privilege and, and they're all great candidates, but I'm happy to see this choice and if you made the motion, I'll second. Okay.
At a, at a wage of $26.93 an hour. Got to stick that in the minutes.
Include that in the motion then.
So I will amend my motion to promote Austin Peterson to $26.93 an hour.
Motion in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I assume you're Austin in the back there.
I'd like to bring him up and introduce him. This is Austin Peterson.
Yeah.
Very happy for you.
We're not going to pin him.
Thank you. Thank you, Austin. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, the crossing at Holly Boulevard now is the, on the agenda item. Discussion, Brian, any additional?
No, you know, we, we can certainly take a look at all of those recommendations or suggestions and, and see if we can fit those in. I know Riley and Dana have started working on the lights, so we'll take a look.
I'd make a motion to oppose each one of Riley's recommendations if we can go ahead and just look at each one of those.
Do we have to make a motion on it?
No, we'll, we, we can come back with, with some recommendations. You know, looking at them, they're all pretty easy to do, so we'll take a look and, and we'll probably make those changes that we can prior to the next council meeting.
Very good.
And Paul, you had increased, increased teachers and stuff out there?
We had, I had one of our staff. What grade are you in, Riley?
Fifth.
Fifth? Okay, I had her middle school PE teacher come out there and try to do some education with the kids because everybody likes the PE teacher. And I figured that'd be a good choice to have out there and, and so he's been out there this week trying to help out the kids and educate them a little bit and hopefully that helps. And as I told you, Jen, we had moved our lights, our cameras to better, so we can get the, the crosswalk there in our, in our filming. So we have adjusted those to get those in there at the school too. So hopefully, hopefully we don't need to use it, but it's always better to be safe than sorry.
And so Riley, you suggested that we go to like 4:30, right? Three to 4:30 because the kids are out. 5:30?
5:30, okay.
Just because of the fact that kids like to hide their bikes around town to stuff that they do after school until their parents get home.
Okay.
I know I didn't take one to after school.
Okay.
I know, as I said, I was down at City Hall shortly after you had sent the letter, Jen, and they were already working on, Tammy was working on different lights there and looked like some nice possibilities there that we can work together as a school and a city, I think, to get something accomplished there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Riley, for being so brave to.
Yeah, great suggestion. Thank you. You're going to be sitting up here someday.
Yeah, exactly.
You're going to be sitting someday. Take your mic off.
Continue to wear your helmet.
Yes, that's not changing.
Very good. And the next thing on the agenda is, Dave, we have your retirement notification, resignation?
Yeah, we don't have to. We don't have to.
Poor guy retired.
Hey, props to Nelson who's retiring.
We, we try not to call it a resignation, it's a retirement. And again, it's about six months out or 193 days if you're counting. I'm submitting this now just so that we've got enough time to go through a selection process and, and then I've got that 45-minute speech to write and, no. So anyway, I submitted, April 26th is the date that I picked and, and it'll be up to the council to decide how to proceed on selection, my, selecting my replacement. So, thank you.
We'll need a motion to accept his retirement.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you for all your years of service, Dave.
Yeah.
Done a nice job.
Yeah.
Yep, I know, but thank you for everything.
One guy retiring, two other guys retiring.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Rec Committee report. Work report was in your packet. Grant Resolution Number 17-18, Brian?
This would fund some improvements up at Stone Ridge Park, so we'll apply for a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. Typically there's 50% match and we've got this in next year's budget, so typically they provide 50% of the project costs.
So I would make a motion to approve the grant request.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, the offer on the skateboard equipment. A little bit more of it going out the door?
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Paz, once again has stepped up and offered a bid of $100 for two boxes and the grind rail.
And Devin is all for it, so I will make a motion to approve.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Administration report, website proposal, Christina?
Yes. We're looking at upgrading our website. It's been about four years since we've done that, so it's probably about time. We're looking at going with Gov Office, which is who we currently are with. They have three different options and I would recommend the premium option and we do have money in the budget. We'll take it out of third cent sales tax. It's the same fund we took it out of in 2014, so it'd be the same fund and there's money in their budget and money in there for that.
It'd be a very good use of that money, I believe.
I must be missing it. How much are we talking?
Eight hundred and seventy.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Well, I should say, we went over this in length on Thursday night, so, I mean, it's not like we're approving it for no reason, but we went over it in length on Thursday night and just the upgrades and it's going to be more, more mobile friendly and everything else that, and you can do a pay option on there. There's lots of fun features on there that, so much more convenient than what we have now.
Greatly enhanced version of what we have now.
Yeah, one additional feature is just that you can put out alerts and they'll be on any page that somebody accesses. So if the public kind of screaming for wanting that piece of communication or I didn't see it or didn't know about it, that will really lent to help with, with that.
One other question, Christina, would we anticipate then doing this every four to five years, making changes, probably?
Probably be my guess. Hopefully the premium option will help us in, to not do that and they'll keep upgrading, but it's possible. Everything moves so fast in technology.
What's the estimation of when this would be complete?
Um, three to three and a half months.
I would ask Christina that you expedite it as quickly as you can. That's the bad news of getting this up and going. As soon as it hits the airwaves, everybody wants it right now, so you gotta, gotta just stay on it and stay on the company, get it going. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Heard from two of our patrons earlier in the public comments section. Brian, any?
As you probably know, our current fireworks ordinance allows the shooting of any and all fireworks on July 3rd and 4th. July 3rd is, correct me if I'm wrong, chief?
Seven to 11.
Seven to 11 and then July 4th, it's 10 AM to 11 PM. And then I also handed out a copy of the Sioux Falls ordinance regarding fireworks.
If I can, I, we're kind of a couple of months behind the ball on reporting back about the committee. It's a little bit of it's after the fact, but there, there was a group of four of us that met a couple of months ago to discuss the fireworks ordinance and I'll try to not be redundant here, but there's some additional points I think that are worthy of just bringing up. When we met, it was TJ Cameron, Jim Erby, Chief Cull and myself. One of the things that I found really helpful was TJ actually brought a lot of the items to the meeting and, and allowed us to see what they were and gave us some extra descriptions on how they operated and where they went and how controllable they were, weren't, and how loud, et cetera. One thing that we all unanimously agreed on right away was those Chinese lanterns should be banned. Those are the things that float around with a flame. You have no control over where they're going to go, whose roof they're going to land on, what tree you'll find them in. So those, those haven't been mentioned yet today, but those were something that we all agreed should not be in our city. We then also determined, as TJ mentioned, the artillery shells, some people call them mortars, they're very, very loud and they're super dangerous. They're really powerful and they can tip over and they can shoot off towards somebody, towards somebody's house, towards somebody's garage. Chief Cull shared, shared an experience that he was involved in where somebody's hand was literally just split open from one of these things and they, that wasn't even the fireworks, it was the base. Is that correct? Am I getting it close? Okay. Rockets were kind of second, second on our, our list because you just can't determine what direction they're going to go. They're also very loud and they're the things that can have the embers coming down and that's what Debbie Lund, I believe, was here showing us she had on her home and on her roof and in her bushes, et cetera. We did talk about the awareness factor that Mr. Erby is bringing up and, and I think we're all in agreement that we, we can and should and need to do more and had some different discussions there and Mr. Erby, of course, gave us that handout. Probably the most difficult thing to determine is the enforcement part of it. Chief Cull brought up some good points, you know, that it gets very difficult to enforce some fireworks over other fireworks. So Brett, you asked earlier about like a, a bottle rocket, you know, the, the difficult thing, how do you determine what's a bottle rocket and what's a firecracker from a distance? So it makes it very challenging for the police to, to get a handle on that. His, his comments were that it would be easier as far as an enforcement viewpoint, either a full ban or a no ban. He did have a very good suggestion, I thought, that would be a tweak in our ordinance verbiage to give the ability, ability for an officer to cite an offender and/or the property owner. to give the ability for an officer to cite an offender and/or the property owner. So it would be helpful, not just for fireworks that were actually being let off, but in debris situations where it was very clear, you know, you pull up and it looks like multiple piñatas have gone off. You don't have to actually see it happening, which would help us kind of do some of the cracking down. We had a little discussion about having tiered tickets for repeat offenders, but Chief Cull assured us that it would escalate on the second call. First offense, they would be ticketed and warned, and if officers had to go back, it could be considered disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, and they may go to jail. So we felt pretty comfortable with that. You know, a couple, Mr. Erby talked about some statistics, I've looked up a lot, and none of it is pretty. In 2017, there were eight deaths and 12,900 injuries from fireworks. Fires, there were 18,000, or there are 18,500 fires per year, including 1,300 structure fires, 300 vehicle fires, 16,000 outside and other fires. So there's definitely some concern, and I guess I'll kind of end my thoughts on one statement that resonates with me because we talk about making our decisions and the conscience that we have to live with that TJ talked about. We know that pyrotechnics aren't safe, and I don't want to be in a situation where we're answering to somebody with a small child that has a severe burn, or has been maimed, or lost an eye, or there's a fatality, and we have to tell that parent that we thought fireworks were safe, because we know they're not. So the phrase I'm gonna leave here with is, "In an instant, the excitement and drama of pyrotechnics can take a tragic turn, destroying lives and property." And that's what I think we have to focus on when we make our decision on how we want our ordinance to be.
Thank you, Dana, and thank you, Mr. Erby, for coming forward again, and TJ, too. I will tell you this, I am weighing back and forth because I know the kids like to do it, and when I had a younger family, they liked doing it, but I don't like it now because now I have all the stuff in my yard, and I don't even shoot them off. The one thing I thought about, and has been suggested to me, is actually bring the sale of the fireworks into the city so we get the tax dollars, but then not allow them to be shot off in the city, which I know would come with maybe some opposition. But there's a lot of cities that don't allow it in their city, and, you know, tax dollars are tax dollars. So that'd be the way I'd be leaning myself, is to ban it.
So Lisa, could you tell us about the court case today? What happened on that ticket?
We had a court trial in front of one of our magistrate judges today relative to a citation for somebody who shot off fireworks on July 1st. We don't allow them on July 1st. The reason the resident gave to the judge for shooting off the fireworks was, "I did not know about the ban on the first, had I known about it, I wouldn't have shot them off." And the judge rejected that. Ignorance is no defense of the law, so if a citizen doesn't know an ordinance, one of our rules, just because you don't know one of the rules doesn't give you a defense to not being found guilty of one of our offenses. So the judge listened to our officer, Officer Henning, who did a nice job testifying as to what he saw, what he heard. The defendant, the resident, gave his side of the story, and the judge found him guilty of the violation, imposed a $100 fine, which is what our violation imposes, and then $60 court costs. So that money goes to the county, most of all of it goes to the county. The city gets a very, very small percentage back, like 8% of that back. So this is not something that the city does to make money. That's something I oftentimes hear when I talk to residents after they've been cited, is this is something that the city is doing just to make money. It's not, we don't make money enforcing these types of things. We do them because they're our laws, and that's the direction the council has given. So that's the update. The takeaway is, just because you don't know about the ordinance doesn't mean you can't be found guilty of violating the ordinance, and the courts will enforce our ordinances as written. So whatever the city decides to do with respect to the ordinance, certainly, I would encourage the city to do awareness, but once we pass it, we passed it. It's been published, and it is enforceable.
Thank you. So I'd like to propose that we move to a compromise position. I'm not really in favor of banning all fireworks at this time, but I think it is really important, what TJ said about the mortars and the rockets and these Chinese lanterns limit what can be shot off. I think it's really good, too, that we could cite the landowner with the debris, because I know it is really hard for the police officers to track them down. I think our enforcement has been beefed up just by this case at trial, and so I think the police are trying to do a better job of enforcing, and so I think that that's important. And so I'd like to see if we could, you know, keep our timeframe down, maybe the same timeframe we had last year, the night before, and the day of, the 4th of July, continue the enforcement. You know, once the word gets out that those tickets are being issued, that Facebook stuff is gonna pick up, and I think they're gonna get caught on that, and if the landowner can be cited, I think that would go a long ways, too.
Would Sioux Falls, do they just limit it to one day? Do you know, Dana?
It's illegal.
It's illegal. I don't think I've been shy on telling the council, I would be in favor of following what Sioux Falls has done and see Brandon do a zero tolerance. To Dana's point, I'm one of those parents that had a child injured, had a skin graft. I don't watch fireworks anymore, so...
Felix, it's a matter of time before we all know somebody that has suffered an injury. I mean, the statistics are just that heavy.
One of the things I want to, I do want to point out with the Sioux Falls ordinance, and we can all remember the ramp up to the 4th of July last year when the PIO for Sioux Falls Police Department was on time and time again talking about zero tolerance, zero ban, no fireworks, smokeballs, and sparklers, I think, were the two things that were authorized. If you looked over there on the 4th of July, the 3rd of July, it was quite a display that was still going up, you know, despite the ban. They did have extra officers out on patrol, and absolutely no citations were written on that night. We wrote 17 here, and I think it did have an effect of dampening down. We could probably do a little bit better job, and all I'm kind of getting at here is that you put in a ban, and the fireworks are gonna go off, and there's gonna be probably very... It is difficult to enforce. But the police department will do what the council passes and try to cope with it. But it's not necessarily gonna totally solve the problem.
Brian, is there any protocol on changing the ordinance? Is there multiple readings or anything like?
Yep, typically, what we do is we get input from the council. City attorney will draft an ordinance for your review. We can make some tweaks to it, if it's acceptable, then we'll schedule it for a first reading, second reading, and then it's published, and then it goes into effect 20 days after publication. So it's, you know, it's gonna take two months from the time you agree the language to the time it goes into effect.
I guess what I need to know is if we're doing a total ban, a ban of just everything but sparklers and snakes and smokeballs. I can draft whatever, and you can change it afterwards, but I just don't yet know what the consensus is in terms of what you'd like me to draft.
I would like it to just be limited, I will not vote for a total ban.
I'm with Chuck, I think it needs to be following Sioux Falls. The only other thing I can add is I did visit in the last few months with five of our police officers, not counting Chief Cull, and they all were very united against fireworks and want the direction of zero tolerance and being told to enforce it.
I will say, and Mr. Erby, you and I live close to each other, but sometimes I hear fireworks from out of town, you know, and they're not actually in our city limits. So I've actually driven out because to see, after we put in the ordinance last year, to see where they were, and they were outside of our city limits. So that, but being in close proximity to that, we can hear those sometimes. Now, with that being said, my dogs hate them, as well as I understand veterans, too, and other people. So I'm gonna go back to my original, I'm gonna be with Chuck, I'm gonna go with what Sioux Falls says just because of the fact that there is so many issues with them.
Just to be clear, I'm also in agreement with that. As a veteran, as someone that deals with chronic pain and knows the firsthand effects of those challenges that face, I think those, having a complete ban with zero tolerance would be very beneficial to those people that have similar concerns and problems that each person faces within their life's journey. So I will stand with the others in two zero tolerance.
Oh, I think that gives me direction, so I will draft something, and it will be before you for the next council meeting, then.
Do we have to make a...
Nope.
I would ask that you draft the ordinance, and then it's still eligible to be, if somebody has compelling arguments one way or another, it can be changed.
Right.
Can be completely changed.
But it needs to, it needs to get going. I've been with it taking so long. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
TJ Cameron, so the Sioux Falls City Ordinance is not a complete ban, actually?
No, it's not, we have it right here.
Okay. I'm just saying, I just wanted to call that out because it's actually 1.4G fireworks without a rapport or projectile launching component are what are banned, which actually allows lots of kids fireworks and novelties and such. Doesn't allow any kind of family display type stuff, but they don't have a complete ban. It basically allows sparklers, it allows more than smokeballs and sparklers. It allows smokeballs, sparklers, snaps, basically anything without a fuse. What they're saying by projectile and rapport, it even allows technically, if it doesn't have a rapport, fountains would be allowed, which are still a little bit of a display, but don't go, you know, more than a few feet in every direction, things like that. So there are some things that would still be allowed under a, you know, match Sioux Falls ordinance situation. It would be education either way.
Well, I can work with TJ to maybe get a little better clarification, because I don't know what some of this means.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
So I'll work with him, and we'll see if we can get a good definition.
So as not to have to reinvent the wheel, I would ask that you mirror the Sioux Falls ordinance and go with that, and then we can come back later, and if we wanted to change something, we can go there.
All right. No problem.
Get yours.
Where are we now? Appointment Jared Johnson to the Development Committee? He'd like to be appointed to the Development Committee, Chuck?
He had called me a couple weeks ago, we visited for about 10 minutes on the phone, so I would support him being appointed and would make that motion. I would just ask Christina, because, I'm sorry, my eyesight, just send me his email address, I can't read it on here.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of appointing Jared Johnson to the Brandon Development Committee? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Wage and benefits study.
I handed that out at the work session Thursday. Danny gave me a contact information to look at benefits with. I'll make that phone call while the council run and get out of court this week.
She actually sent what she needs. Either you can fill that out, or just get her copy of the policy.
I'll ship her a copy of the policy.
And she'll weed through what else she needs. I guess I'd like to propose that we have a work session on this to kind of get everybody up to speed with where we're at and do it timely enough that we can get some traction before the fiscal year flips over. So if we could, I know the gal that was dealing with the benefits said she could have a turnaround time in seven to 10 days. So I think it would be ideal if we get something scheduled.
Okay, we'll take a look at the calendar.
I think that would give us more time to work.
Okay, we'll go with that, Brian. Leave that up to you to schedule something when you're first available.
Yep.
Code of Conduct, Council Mayor Policy Changes Update?
You have before you some revisions to the essentially personnel administrative type of ordinances that we already have. Nothing asked me to say tonight, we'd have to do an ordinance, we'd have to publish and post and set for public hearing, the ordinance revisions. At one of the work sessions we had on this, the consensus seemed to be relative to what's in here, just defining better the duties of the mayor versus the duty of the council members, who is going to be an appointed officer versus an employee that's not appointed by the mayor with the city council approval and removal by the mayor without the city council approval. Previously, I'd given to you a listing of what other cities do relative to what type of positions they have. I took the comments that were provided at the work session, revised them to include the language that you have before you. I can certainly change things around, if you want to have a work session on this and put it in there, we could do it that way, too. There's a lot of things in here, so it's not something that's ready to have all public comment, but I wanted to get something to you. I did, relative to the code of conduct, I had initially drafted a very brief section of it. I went back in and looked again at other cities, what they have in South Dakota and outside of South Dakota, and kind of consolidated what I thought made sense from all of those different ordinances from different cities to try and encapsulate a bunch of different things, and that's what you have before you.
I'm not trying to create more meetings, but I think it would be good to have a work session on it because there's a lot of information there that we need to talk about.
Yeah, so you could do it at the same time, I mean, I could come first, or I could come second to that other one, or a whole different one, so...
Different one, if we have Julie from HR come to talk about part of the wage and benefits, and we have somebody come and present about the...
I wouldn't see this one taking as long as the wage benefit one, so...
And so if there's anything that somebody wants me to look at before that, just let me know. I think I kind of said that last time, and I got a couple policies from certain council members saying, "Take a look at this and see what you think about adding that," which is helpful to get. So if there's something else that you're seeing out there. When I drafted this revision, I did look at, I kind of call them the ESD cities, Watertown, Aberdeen, Brookings, Yankton, that what they have for some of theirs, just to kind of try and decide if it made sense for what I know about the city over the last 10 years. But I'm not the one who, you're the ones who need to have the language and pass the language, so you just need to let me know what else you want to look at, if there's something else you want me to provide to you or do. So, thank you.
Any of the council members have anything currently that they'd like to discuss on what Lisa has presented?
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's... Okay, so we're doing a work study on that as well.
All right, Brian. Another meeting.
Yep.
I think we might have one more, too.
We'll get it scheduled.
Leave that up to you to schedule and coordinate. Social media policy.
Council members, Houseman and Clark, met with staff last week to start reviewing social media policy and some of the items that we would like to include in that. We've got examples from Sioux Falls and the city of Golden Valley in Minnesota, which is much more extensive than we will be doing since they have a whole communications department. So right now, we're taking a look at what the purpose of our social media sites are, standardized content, how we want things posted, as well as who will be eligible to post. At this point in time, we're looking at a policy that would include staff only, and then kind of each department head would be responsible for posting items affecting there or from their departments. The chief would post from the police department, Public Works would post for sewer water streets, administration would kind of encompass them all, but that's kind of where we're going currently.
So we'll be bringing that back?
We'll be bringing that back, and then along with that, we talked about the upgrade to the website, which was also part of that discussion.
The social media policy that Joe got her hands on, I thought was very good and very simplistic. So if that could, yeah, if that could be included as part of what we mesh together, that would be great.
Other council members, all right? Proceeding that way?
Yep. I will say, on the new website, though, be accessed to go to our Twitter, our Facebook, and our YouTube page. So I forgot to say that before.
Resolution 1818 Accounting Policies. Christina?
Yeah, so this is an accounting policy for the city. Kind of stemmed from the state needing more of an accounting policy for our transit grant. So that's kind of where it started. And it's just kind of the ins and outs of our accounting, just the basis of accountings or capital asset policies. A lot of this is taken actually out of our audit report. A lot of this is in there, and then just goes over some internal control procedures that we have been doing or already doing, and a few tweaks on that. Sat down with Chuck and Barb, our financial committee, on Friday over this, and made a few tweaks on it, but other than that, it's...
We've been deemed in the past in our audit for lack of separation of duties. Sure, hoping that this will solve that issue. We've made some clear procedures as to who gets the mail, who makes the deposit, who reconciles the statements, those sorts of things, just basic kinds of separations of duty. So we're hoping that that will get that off of our audit report. And Christina did a really nice job of putting this together. She spent quite a bit of time on it. So thank you, Christina.
I agree. It's a good start. We may make tweaks on some sort of basis as we come across stuff. I guess I would just, I had it here, sorry. If you look at page 66 at the very top, starting in November, we're going to have shared drives, city policy that nothing goes into a private drive if it's city-related. I think that's a very good thing. So again, thank you, Christina.
Very extensive list of all the accounting policies that the city is following. I would keep it as a working document, Christina. Being in the same business, I have that on my desk all the time. As you come upon those things that need to be tweaked, that's when you do it. It's going to be a working document.
Did you take a look at the form?
I did. I did. And it's, it's a very good list, I think.
Do we need a motion for the resolution?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 1818.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Meeting with the Sioux Falls City Council.
A year or so ago, we met with, we started a series of meetings with the Sioux Falls City Council, and we were doing them quarterly, which was probably a little bit too much. I talked with Christine Erickson from their city council at the South Dakota Municipal League Conference a week or two weeks ago now. And we had, we share an interest that we would like to get those started again, maybe twice a year, since we've got new council members here and they've got new council members there. December 6th and 13th are meeting dates here, but the 20th is open currently. So if that works on your schedule, I can get ahold of Jim, David at the City of Sioux Falls and get that scheduled for the 20th.
December.
That works for me.
And if you remember, well, most of you weren't there.
Barb and I were.
We didn't have an agenda. It was just an open discussion between councils as to what they see coming down the road or projects of mutual interest or concern. So it's fairly open-ended discussion format.
So it's needing to be posted, then?
They're posted. They're open meetings. So we'd probably have a little more formalized agenda this time because we'd have to accommodate public comment. But whichever city is hosting the meeting would be the one that would post it.
And I will say from past, it was really beneficial to meet with them and get to know like what they're working on, what their concerns are, how they want to work with us interactively. It was really beneficial, and I was really bummed when we stopped doing it, but we were doing it so often that it was harder to get, and there was less and less people going. So I think if we just do it twice a year, then one time we'll be in Sioux Falls, one time we'll be here, we just swap back and forth. And it really was beneficial. So I'm all in favor of it.
We took a tour of the water treatment plant with them, and that was really beneficial to see how that all processes. So I think there is some value, though, in having a little bit more structured agenda just so we get through all of the points that we want to cover.
So since you and Joe are experienced, we can call you old Barb.
Yeah, mature. I like the term mature.
No, old.
I'm younger than you, buddy.
Brian.
Whoa.
Brian, if you want to just coordinate with me to get an agenda going on that and schedule it for the 20th of December, thank you. Maintenance work report is in your board packet. Anything else on that, Brian? Matt Rowley? You saw a grease trap invitation letter and agenda. You're inviting...
We've got the water trickling letter that we... We've got the water trickling letter that we're sending out. For those of you that don't know, we do have a list of 19 properties that at some point in the future, their water line has frozen up for one reason or the other. We send this letter out to those folks to inform them that they can certainly trickle if they want to. Trickling alleviates the water line freezing up. We do not typically, we do not bill those folks for the extra water used for the trickling. We're giving them some options this year. They can certainly continue to trickle if they want to. If they don't, they can take the temperature of their water, and when it gets down to 35 or below, they should start trickling then. Don't do anything if you want to, or you can be removed from the trickliness. We're just asking those residents to give us a call or contact us to let us know what they're, what they will choose.
So do we say in here that they don't get charged?
Yep.
And then do we also say in here that it doesn't go count against their sewer usage, that whole calculation thing? Can we put that in there someplace?
We can.
You also, Rowley, sent out a letter on the grease trap, invited all the restaurants it looked like.
Actually, we invited anybody that serves food. So restaurants, gas stations, school district, anybody that's a large food preparer, Sunshine Foods, et cetera. We'll be invited to a meeting on October 24th at 2:00 to get some input on some type of grease trap inspection program. We'd like their input before we start drafting one.
Very good. Good idea. Thank you. Anything else? Is there any need for any executive session tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
For...
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
1:25, 2.
To contract negotiations, sorry.
I would add, contract negotiations.
Okay, we'll need a motion to go into executive session for contract negotiations at 7:16 PM.